Peace be upon you, this is Said Mirza from We Know Reason dot com. And we're going to be continuing on with our Quran study session. We left off at chapter ten verse seventy-three, so we're gonna continue on from there. Just a little bit of background, uh, we are reading the translation by Brother Gans, the Quran, A Complete Revelation. And uh, you can go on reader dot corny dot com if you want to follow along. Uh, this website gives you access to uh, not only a translation, but also the footnotes. So I suggest you read those footnotes as well, and uh, it gives you access to other translations. As well as the Arabic grammar, if you are so inclined, so it's a really good tool if you want to study the Quran. And the reason that I'm using Brother Gans translation is because this is the only translation that I know of, which is Quran alone translation in that Brother Gans has gone through the words of the Quran to derive their meanings. Uh, whereas other translators, a lot of times they'll be using meanings that uh, either are found in additionaries or uh, sectarian meanings, which uh, they are coming up with through the lens of the Hadith literature. And the Hadith literature are saying attributed to Prophet Muhammad, um, written by certain characters, which I reject and Brother Gans rejects that as well. Uh, we treat the Quran as a complete revelation, as self-sufficient, as self-consistent, as self-referencing. Um, and so we look at the Quran for um, the meanings of words and derive the context from looking at the Quran. So that's kind of a little background for those of you who are just joining in. Let's start at verse seventy-four. Uh, this is a context of uh, Nu Prophet Noah, who was sent to his people and uh, they denied him. And uh, then God delivered him and the believers in a ship and the rest of people were drowned. So let's begin. In the name of God, the Almighty and merciful, I seek refuge in God from Satan, the accursed. Then raise we up after him messengers to their people, and they came to them with clear signs, but they were not to believe in what they had denied before. Thus do we seal the hearts of the transgressors. So God's uh, Sunnah, his um, tradition is that he sends messengers uh, who are bearers of glad tidings and warners. And uh, the people deny them usually. Uh, there's only one instance of the Quran, uh, and one instance of one messenger in the Quran who wasn't denied. The rest were all denied by their people and then God sees them for their denial. This is how uh, this is what the God protocol is all about if you're interested in Brother Gans work. He goes in quite in depth about that, so. The other thing is that uh, once you, once you deny God's signs, then a seal is set upon your heart. And uh, this is what is being referenced here, but they were not to believe in what they had denied before. So when God's signs come and you deny them, then God places a seal in on your heart because you are a transgressor. And uh, then you're done, your fate is sealed. And uh, we're gonna see uh, this playing out in the narration of Musa. Uh, Musa, as you know, Prophet Moses was sent to Pharaoh, Pharaoh, so let's start from there. Seventy-five, then raise we up after them Moses and Aaron before Pharaoh and his eminent ones with our proofs. But they had waxed proud and they were a people of lawbreakers. And when the truth came to them from us, they said, this is obvious sorcery. Now, this is referring to the two signs that were given to Musa, Moses, uh, which was the, the staff changing into a serpent. And uh, his hand uh, becoming white, um, Pharaoh. And his eminent ones denied these proofs of God and they said, this is obvious sorcery. And the Quranic usage of the term Sahar, which is sorcery, uh, has to do with illusion. And we see this similar illusion being played out uh, via mass media. Um, such as you know, television or the internet or movies, uh, is to is to change people's perception about reality. Uh, that's what sorcery is at its core. Moses said, do you say of the truth when it has come to you is this sorcery, but the sorcerers will not be successful? They said, hast thou come to us to turn us away from that upon we which, upon which we found our fathers? And that there be for you majesty in the land and we do not believe you. So this is something that is a kind of recurring theme in the Quran, that uh, messengers, when they came to their people, they always argued saying that uh, we are following our fathers. And uh, you know, we're guided by their footsteps. So this was similarly the charge that was placed upon Musa, that you are turning us away from what we found our fathers doing. And the other is more of a nefarious charge that you are uh, basically trying to gain the upper hand in the land. And we do not believe you, and Pharaoh said, bring to me every learned sorcerer. And when the sorcerers came, Moses said to them, cast what you will cast. So they basically had a contest to determine who is to be followed. And when they had cast, Moses said, what you have brought is sorcery, God will make it vain. God makes not right the worker, the work of the workers of corruption. And God establishes the truth by his words, though the lawbreakers be averse. And they believe not Moses save a progeny of his people for fear of Pharaoh and their eminent ones, that they would subject them to means of denial. And Pharaoh was exalted in the land and he was of the committed of excess. So most people did not believe Moses because they were afraid that they would be persecuted by Pharaoh and his forces. Uh, as you know, Pharaoh claimed to be a god and uh, he wasn't going to stand for, you know, what Moses was bringing in. And Moses said, oh my people, if you believe in God, then place your trust in him if you are submitting. And they said, in God have you placed our trust, our lord, make thou not us a means of denial for the wrongdoing people, as in don't uh, subject us to uh, subject us as a test for the wrongdoing people, as in, you know, the wrongdoing people act against us, aggress against us. And deliver thou us by thy mercy from the people of the false claimers of guidance. Now, this is the word Al Kafirin, which uh, the traditionalists understands it to mean unbelievers, but it has a bit of a nuance to it. This is people who claim to believe when they don't really believe. Uh, this is treated off in the beginning of chapter two, so I refer you to this, for the first occurrence of this word in the Quran, uh, to figure out what that means. And we instructed Moses and his brother, settle your people in Egypt in houses and make your houses a destination and uphold the duty. And bear thou glad tidings to the believers. Now, this verse is uh, is twisted quite a bit by the followers of the vision Islam, because they are trying to enforce upon you uh, their, their prayer, which is the five daily ritual prayers, uh, facing a direction uh, of the stone, uh, stone idol Gaba in Makkah. When this is not talking about that, so let's just dissect this a little bit. So God instructed Moses and his brother, brother, settle your people in Egypt in houses, okay? So they were being persecuted, so they were told to settle uh, in houses. Basically, all the believers need to come together, right? And make your houses a Qibla, in Arabic is Qibla. Now, this has been twisted to mean, this word has been twisted to mean that this is a directional prayer. Uh, but that doesn't fit, that makes no sense here. Uh, because these, it's talking about settling your people in Egypt in houses, as in you have to make safe houses. And make your houses a destination, so people, people come to these places, that's what the word Qibla means, it's not a direction of a ritual prayer. And uphold the duty and bear thou glad tidings to believers. Now, obviously here the word duty means prayer, but to claim that this means a specific ritual prayer, uh, which consists of bowing, prostrating and all that stuff, that's not what it means here, it just means general prayer. As in call to God for help and uh, that's one of the salats that we are to uphold. Uh, generically, the word Salah just means to uphold, Akimah Salah just means to uphold the duty, which is the commandments of God. So yes, it is our duty, one of the duties of, of the believers to call upon God, you know, in chapter one, in the beginning it says, you alone we serve and from you alone we seek assistance. So that is the upholding the duty that they are being commanded to do. And we see this right happening right after that, when Moses calls to God, asks for his help. Verse eighty-eight, and Moses said, our lord, thou hast given Pharaoh and his eminent ones adornment and wealth in the life of this world. Our lord, that they might lead astray from thy path. Our lord, destroy thou their wealth and harden thou their hearts, so that they believe not until they see the painful punishment. So Moses prayed to God, um, basically saying, destroy their wealth. Uh, please God destroy this, their wealth, see? Because this is how they're misleading men, because people are impressed by material things. And this is what we see in this life too right now. The elites have all the power, they have all the wealth, so people worship them. So God, uh, uh, God then answers him, he said, your supplication has been answered, so take a straight path and follow not the path of those who know not. So God answers his supplication and uh, we see this playing out later ninety. And we brought the children Israel across the sea and Pharaoh flow followed them with his forces in sectarian zealotry and enmity. When the drowning had overtaken him, he said, I believe there is no God save he in whom the children Israel believe and I am of those submitting. You see how this played out, this is what um, Musa prayed for here it says. So they believe not until they see the painful punishment, see? So now he believes, uh, when he sees the painful punishment, he's being drowned. So now he believes, but it's not gonna avail him. So God asks now, and thou opposedst before and was of the workers of corruption. So this day will be saved thee in thy body and that thou be approved to those after thee, but most among men are heedless of our proofs. So his body was saved, but he died and uh, a lot of theories about, about this, so you know, uh, that's what the Quran says and I believe it. We'll just leave it at that, but most men among, uh, both, but most among men are heedless of our proofs. I guess coming back to this thing is that once you see uh, the painful punishment, then your repentance will not be accepted, that's the tradition of God. And we settled the children Israel in a goodly settlement and provided them with good things, and they differed not until knowledge came to them. Thy lord will judge between them on the day of resurrection concerning that wherein they differed. Now, this differing until knowledge came to them, this is again something that happens with people who are given knowledge. I mean, it happened with the Jews, the children Israel, and it's also happened with Muslims. In that they were given the Quran, the alkitab, which contains in it the complete law, but then they um, they split off into separate sects. Each party exalting at what it has, is how the Quran puts it. And if thou art in doubt about what we have sent down to thee, then ask thou those who read the writ before thee, and the truth from thy lord has come to thee, so be thou not of those who doubt. Now, this is referencing Muhammad and as in if you are in doubt, then ask, ask about this account from those who read the writ, because the writ was sent to Moses as well, so this account is in, in the writ that was given. Uh, that the, the Jews are holding on to. And the truth from thy lord has come to thee, so be thou not of those who doubt. And just to clear this up, when a Quran is saying, if thou aren't doubt, it's, it's referencing, it's, it's addressing uh, the reader, it's addressing the person who's reading. So uh, yes, it is addressing Muhammad primarily, but it's also addressing anyone who's reading the Quran, um, in the first person. And be thou not of those who deny the proofs of God, for thou wouldst be among the losers. As we have seen in this chapter, that yes, those who denied the proofs of God, they were the losers, they were destroyed. Those upon whom the word of thy lord has become binding, they will not believe. And though every proof come to them until they see the painful punishment. See, this is again talking about the sealing of the hearts, uh, when God, God's word becomes binding upon them, then they do not believe. And any proof that comes to them, they will not believe in it, in it, until they see the painful punishment. Oh, that a city had but believed and profited by its faith, save the people of Jonah, Eunus. When they believed, we removed from them the punishment of disgrace and the life of this world and gave them enjoyment for time. As I mentioned in the Quran, there's only one other instance where people believed when a messenger was sent to them. And those were the people of Jonah, in Arabic he is called Eunus. And had thy lord believed, whoso, and had, and had thy lord willed, whoso is in the earth would have believed. All of them, all together, wouldst thou then compel mankind until they believe? Okay, so this is the, there's no compulsion in the doctrine of God. Um, everyone is free to believe what they want to believe, the proofs have come. And uh, so similarly, the recipient of the Quran, um, is being told that had thy lord willed, whoso is in the earth would have believed. As in God would have compelled them to believe, but he has given them a choice. So are you the one to compel them to believe? And it is for a soul to believe only by the belief of God, and he appoints abomination for those who do not reason. Now, this reasoning thing, this is very critical, see, the Quran calls us to reason. It calls us to think, to ponder, to reflect. God is presenting his proofs and based on the preponderance of evidence, we come to the conclusion that yes, there is a God and that God will raise us up on the day of judgment, because uh, he is the giver of life and giver of death, and he has power over it. And um, so this is the whole thing, so be those who do not reason, God appoints an abomination upon them. So using your reason, this is one of the things that, you know, the Quran calls us again and again towards. Say thou, look at what is in the heavens and the earth, but the proofs and the warnings avail not a people who do not believe. Now, why is this? Because their hearts are sealed, see? Look at what, see, the, the proofs in the heavens and the earth are sufficient evidence for the existence of God, for the majesty of God, for the power of God. And when the receiver of the Quran is, is told, this is Qul, this is, uh, this is the messenger being told to say something. Uh, so messenger is being directed to say, look at what is in the heavens and the earth. But the proofs and the warnings avail not a people who do not believe, why? Because there has, there's a seal that has been put on their heart. One or two, do they await, save the like of the days of those who passed away before them? Yes, they are waiting for that. Say thou, then wait, I am with you waiting. Then will we save our messengers and those who heed warning? Thus is it, thus is it binding upon us, we save the believers. You can just read the beginning of the chapter to see uh, what happened with the messengers and those who heeded warning versus those who did not believe. Say thou, oh mankind, if you are in doubt about my doctrine, I serve not those whom you serve besides God. But I serve God, who will take you, and I am commanded to be of the believers. And set thou thy face towards the doctrine inclining to truth and be thou not of the idolaters. And call thou not besides God to what neither profits thee nor harms thee, for if thou that's, if thou doest, then art thou of the wrongdoers. This is the doctrine of God, see, this is not talking about a religion. The religion Islam, um, is, is a separate thing, the Quran is talking about the doctrine of God, which is outlined here. And uh, that basically you do not take anyone else besides God as God, you serve only God and you call to God, why? And if God should touch thee with affliction, then is there none to remove it save he. And if he should desire good for thee, then is there none to repel his bounty? He causes it to fall upon whom he wills of his servants, and he is the forgiving, the merciful. That's why. Say thou, oh mankind, the truth has come to you from your lord, and whoso is guided, he is but guided to his soul. Uh, he's guided for his soul and whoso strays, he but strays against it, and I am not a guardian over you. And follow thou what is revealed to thee, and be thou patient until God judges, and he is the best of judges. Now, again, follow thou what is revealed to thee, see, this is a command to the receiver of the Quran, Muhammad, it's also a command to, to, to me and to you, anyone else who's reading the Quran. What has God revealed to Muhammad? He has revealed to Muhammad the Quran and only the Quran, okay? This is it, so follow this. Don't follow religion, don't follow Hadith, don't follow the stories written down by men afterwards, just follow the Quran, it's preserved. So that finishes up chapter ten, let's move on to chapter eleven. In the name of God, the Almighty and merciful. Alif Lamra, a writ that proves whereof are fortified, then set out and detailed from one wise and aware. Okay, so we have again the Mukatat here, these are the, we call the mysterious letters, and uh, my understanding is that they preface the beginning of a book, and the Quran is divided into several books. And each book has a purpose and has an audience. So this is, God is telling us that this, the proofs are, are fortified, then set out and detailed, as in God will explain them from one wise and aware. Serve not, save God, I am to you from him a warner and a bearer of glad tidings. That is the purpose of this book, as you know, that's the role of the messenger, he's a warner and he's a bearer of glad tidings. And ask forgiveness of your lord, then turn to him. He will cause you to enjoy a fair provision to a stated term, and he will give every bountiful one his bounty. But if you turn away, I fear for you the punishment of a great day, see? If you turn to God, he asks forgiveness of him, then he will cause you to enjoy a fair provision to a shared term, and he will give every bountiful one his bounty. And if you turn away, then uh, punishment awaits. Unto God is your return, and he is over all things powerful. Now, this returning thing, as I mentioned, my understanding is that this is the second life we were before this. Um, life in a different place and different state. Uh, the Quran alludes to this, it's not really spelled out, but you can get, get an understanding if you read the Quran carefully. Um, so unto God is your return, so from God we come and to God we return. In truth, they fold over their breasts to hide from him, is it not that when they cover themselves with their garments, he knows what they keep, keep secret on what they make known? He knows what is in the breast, see, God knows what is in the breast. So it doesn't matter how you dress yourself up and puff yourself up and wear all these, you know, expensive clothes, branded clothes, or try to, you know, look all this, you know, like aristocratic. It doesn't matter, and none of this matters, this is all just materialism, God knows what is in the hearts. And there is no creature, well, and to come back to this point, I always found it funny that the scholars of Islam, they always uh, you know, try to over top each other by wearing, you know, the garbs they wear with, with, uh, with, with the headdress and the toe and all this stuff, you know, and to me that I always found that funny. Um, and then, you know, they're trying to appear, they, they dress up in these costumes to appear holy. And uh, doesn't matter, God knows what is in the hearts. And there is no creature upon the earth, but upon God is its provision, and he knows its dwelling place and its repository, all is in a clear writ. And he is that created the heavens and the earth in six days, and his throne was upon the water, that he might try you, which of you is best indeed? And if thou sayest, you will be raised up after that, those who ignore warning will say this is only obvious sorcery. So the purpose of creating the heavens and the earth and uh, creating man is that God will try them. Try man to see who is best indeed, this is the purpose of life, you know, people go on and on about purpose of life, this is your purpose. So that God will see who is the best indeed. And if we delay from them the punishment until reckoned time, they will say, what detains it in truth? The day it comes to them, it will not be awarded from them, and they will surround them that were at their mark, see? Uh, they're, they're really, you know, this is another thing that at least the Muslims, they engaged in quite a bit, I think Christians do this too. Where, you know, they're always trying to figure out, when is the day of judgment, looking for signs? Um, this is the games they're playing. They're so they, they wa, they're so, they're trying to expedite the time. But when the day it comes to them, it will not be awarded from them. And if we let man taste mercy from us, then remove it from him, he is without hope and ungrateful. And if we let him taste favor after affliction has touched him, he will say, all evil has left me, and he is exultant and boastful. Save those who are patient and do righteous deeds, those have forgiveness and a great reward. See, it's all about the, it's all about the median path, the, the balance keeping, not, not being too you know, not going on both sides, you know, either you completely lose hope or when, you know, God touches you with his favor, then you are exultant, so it's, it's maintaining this middle path. Then thou might leave some of what is revealed to thee, and thy breasts be straightened, that they say, oh, that a treasure had but been sent down upon him, or an angel had but come with him. Thou art only a warner, and God is guarding over all things. If they say he has invented it, then say thou, then bring ten to us the light thereof invented, and call to whom you can besides God, if you be truthful. Okay, now this surah is to do with the chapters, ten chapters, the light thereof. Why ten? Because we're in chapter eleven, so bring the first tense chapters of the Quran. If, if you're saying that you've been, you have invented this, either way, you can test these things out, you know? Um, if you, oh, where I live, there's a lot of missionary activity, um, because um, there's a lot of Mormons around me, so I, you know, a lot of these questions that are asked, if I, I, I ask the missionaries about this and I get the responses that God says that they will respond. So the next time someone says, you know, I don't believe in the Quran, or, then ask them, so you think it's invented? They say yes, then say, bring ten chapters the light thereof. And see what the response is. And their response will be, and if they respond not to you, so they won't respond to you, then know that it is but sent down with the knowledge of God and that there is no God save he, so will you be submitting? Whoso desires the life of this world and its adornment, we will repay them in full for their deeds therein, and they will not be deprived therein. Those are they for whom there is nothing in the hereafter save the fire, and vain is what they wrought therein, and vanity is what they did. Verse seventeen, is then he who is upon clear evidence from his lord, and a witness from him recites it, and before it was the writ of Moses as an example and a mercy. Those believe in it, but whoso denies it among the parties, then the fire is his appointed place. And be thou not in doubt about it, it is the truth from thy lord, but most men do not believe. And who is more unjust than he who invents a lie about God, those will be brought before their lord. And the witnesses will say, these are they who lied against their lord. In truth, the curse of God is upon the wrongdoers. See, what in, what lie are they inventing, they are saying that this is invented? That this Quran is invented. So who is more unjust than he who invents a lie about God? Those will be brought before their lord and the witnesses will say, these are those who lied against their lord. And these witnesses are those who are reading the writ, he says, and a witness from him recites it. So those people who are reciting the writ, who are reading the writ, who are believing in the writ, they will be called on their, on that day to testify. Those who turn away from the path of God and would make it crooked, and of the hereafter they are deniers. Who are these people? These are the wrongdoers. Because they turn away from the path of God and would make it crooked, this, this is, this is classic religionist stuff, by the way. Religions are the ones who make the path of God crooked, crooked, they, they invent all these different rituals and rules and stipulations and and you know, they, they create loopholes, this is all making God's path uh, crooked. Uh, another translation would be they seek deviation therein, and of the hereafter they are deniers. Those will not escape in the earth, and they have not besides God any allies. Double for them is the punishment, they could not hear, neither did they see. Those are they who have lost their souls and stray from them is what they invented. Without doubt, it is they in the hereafter who will be the greatest losers. Those who heed warning and do righteous deeds and humble themselves unto their lord, those are the companions of the garden, therein they abide eternally. You see, again, the Quran is talking in the sense of, this is the requirement, see? Whoso believes in God on the last day and does good deeds shall have no fear on the day of judgment. Again, those who heed warning and do righteous deeds and humble themselves unto their lord. I'm obviously referring to another verse in the Quran where it says, whoso believes in God on the last day. Anyway, so coming back to this thing, uh, doesn't talk about converting to a religion, does it? Any religion. It's just saying those who heed warning, those who believe, and if you want to know what this means, those who believe, um, let's go a little bit back, because I think this is kind of an interesting point, critical point actually, uh, so where were we? Okay, twenty-three, so just remember that, eleven twenty-three, let's go back to chapter two. Okay. Now, this is what it means to believe. Those who believe in the unseen and uphold the duty and of what we have provided them, they spend. And those who believe in what was sent down to thee, that is the Quran, and what was sent down before thee, this is Tawbat, Tawbat, and Jil. And of the hereafter they are certain, those are upon guidance from their lord and it is they who are the successful, this is belief. And as says in the Lazina Kafadu, this is those who deny, okay? So what do they deny? They deny this part, this is it, this is belief, you see? It's laid out right here, it's not only about converting to a religion. And uh, let's, let me just pull up that verse again, whoso believes in God. Okay, here you go. Two sixty-two, those who heed warning, those who believe, and those who hold to Judaism and the Christians and the Sabaeans, whoso believes in God on the last day and works righteousness, they have their reward with their lord, and no fear will be upon them, nor will they grieve, see? It's not our religions, whoso believes in God on the last day, they can be whatever religion they want, that's not the point. The point is whoso believes in God on the last day. Just because you subscribe to your religion or sect doesn't mean you're saved. Again, those who heed warning and those who hold to Judaism and the Sabaeans and the Christians, whoso believes in God on the last day and works righteousness, no fear will be upon them, nor will they grieve. So yeah, you can search for whoso believes and you'll find all that, so now I think we were on uh, eleven twenty-three, so just get back to that. Okay, so continuing on, verse twenty-four. The likeness of the two factions is like the blind and the deaf and the seeing and the hear, here, are they equal in likeness, will you then not take heed? So you can't compare a believer with an unbeliever, a disbeliever, you can't, because they, they, they're two separate factions. Their, their, their likeness is like the blind and the deaf and the seeing and the hear, they are not equal. And we sent Noah to his people, I am to you a clear warner, again, we get to the story of Nu, uh, which is, he was one of the first prophets that was sent to a people. Um, and they denied him and then the flood overtook them. So what did he say? Did he say convert to a religion that uh, I've come with? No, let's see what he says, verse twenty-six, that you serve not, save God, I fear for you the punishment of a painful day. Then said the eminent ones who disbelieved among his people, we see thee not but as a mortal like us, and we see thee not. And we see not that any follow thee save those who are the abject among us at first appearance. And we see not that any follow thee save those who are the abject among us at first appearance, and we see not in you or us any merit. The truth is, we think you are liars. Again, these people are materialists. This is one of the defining characteristics of the Al-Lazina Kafadu, those who deny or the ones who disbelieve. Um, that they are. Um, materialist. They, 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 in the Quran, they portrayed as those having wealth and children, so they're well off. So because the believers, they don't have those possessions, so they are just written off. He said, oh, my people, have you considered if I be upon clear evidence from my lord, and there has come to me mercy from him, but made obscure to you? Should we compel you to it when you are worse to it, as in you are blind to it, you know, because your hearts are sealed? So should we compel you? There's no compulsion, so you can't, they can't compel them, when you are worse to it. And oh, my people, I ask of you for it no wealth. My reward is only upon God, and I am not one to drive away those who heed warning. They are going to meet their lord, but I see you are people in ignorance. And, oh, my people, who will save me from God if I drive them away? Will you then not take heed? Verse thirty-one. And I say not to you, I have the treasures of God, or I have knowledge of the unseen, nor do I say I am an angel. Nor say I to those whom your eyes disdain, God will not give them good. God best knows what is in their souls. Indeed, I would then be of the wrongdoers. See, God knows what's in the heart. This has already been talked about in the beginning of this chapter, and also, these are the same, some of the things that. Uh, were leveled against messenger Muhammad, as we saw earlier. Um, that, you know, why didn't, why doesn't, why isn't a treasure sent down to you, or why doesn't an angel accompany you, so? This is the same arguments that were. Brought about by the people, by the unbelievers, by the disbelievers, those who denied before, so nothing new, it's the same thing, see? This is why this narration is being presented here, to give the messenger support, to give him. Uh, solace, that this has always been how it's happened, okay? Same arguments. They said, oh, Nu, thou hast disputed with us and hast greatly disputed with us, so bring thou upon us what thou promised us if thou be of the truthful. He said, uh, see, this is again, an echo of the earlier thing we read in the Quran, eh, in this chapter, which, uh, you know, they said, what detains it, what detains the hour? He said, God will be, but will but bring it upon you if he wills, and you cannot escape. And my sincere counsel will not profit you if I desire to give you sincere counsel, if God had desired to cause you to err. He is your lord, and to him you will be returned. See, God guides, only God guides. If they say he has invented it, say thou, if I have invented it, then upon me is my crime, but I am quit of what you commit. Now, this is kind of an aside, because this was already touched upon when they were saying he has invented it. And the first response was, then bring ten chapters like it. Now, again, if they say he has invented it, then say, if I have invented it, then upon me is my crime. And Noah was instructed, none of thy people will believe, but he who has believed already, so despair thou not at what they did. And make thou the ship under our eyes and our instruction, and address thou me not concerning those who have done wrong, they will be drowned. And he made the ship, and every time Eminem wants among his people pass by him, they derided him. He said, if you deride us, yet will we deride you just as you deride. And you will come to know to whom comes a punishment that disgraces him, and upon whom there descends a lasting punishment. When our command had come to pass and the oven boiled over, we said, load thou therein of every pair two. And thy household, save him against whom the word has gone forth, and him who believes, and there believe with him only a few. And he said, embark therein. In the name of God be her passage and her anchorage, my lord is forgiving and merciful. Now, this is something, God is forgiving and merciful, so consider the, these people. They were drowned. Cause they had transgressed all bounds. And it sailed with them amid waves like mountains, and Noah called to his son. And he was set apart, oh, my son, embark, embark thou with us, and be thou not with the false claimers of guidance. Said he, I will take shelter in a mountain that will protect me from the water. He said, there is no protector this day from the command of God, save for him upon whom he has mercy. And the waves came between them, and he was among the drowned. And it was said, oh, earth, swallow thou thy water, and oh, sky, desist thou. And the water subsided, and the matter was concluded, and it came to rest upon Al-Judi. And it was said, away with the wrongdoing people. And Noah called to his lord and said, my lord, my son was of my household, and thy promise is his truth. And thou art the most judge of judges. Now here Noah is, is, is calling to God, and uh. Uh, eh, if you know here earlier, it said. See, God already warned him not to address him concerning those who had done wrong. And God also said to load the ship. Where did I go? Okay, load thou therein of every pair two and thy household, so this is what Noah is referencing here, his household. But God has already made an ex- exception here, save him against whom the word had gone forth, so. His word had gone forth against, uh, Noah's. What Noah was thinking was, he was his son, but he wasn't his son. So this is what's being talked about here, so. He said, oh, Noah, oh, Nu, he was not of thy household, he was a deed not righteous. So ask thou me not of that whereof thou hast no knowledge, I admonish thee lest thou be of the ignorant, so. This, this, uh, this, uh, what, what Nu was thinking was that this was his son. He was not his son, he was, uh, an unrighteous deed. As in Noah's wife betrayed him. Said he, my lord, in thee do I seek refuge lest I ask of thee that whereof I have no knowledge, and save thou forgive me. And have mercy on me, I will be among the losers. It was said, oh, Noah, oh, Nu, get thee down in peace from us and blessing upon thee and upon station, upon nations out of those with thee. And nations will we give enjoyment, then a painful punishment from us will touch them. That is from the reports of the unseen that we reveal to thee. Thou knewest it not, neither thou nor thy people before this. So be thou patient. The final outcome is for those of prudent fear. See, this is. Uh, again, this is being narrated to Muhammad to give him confidence, to give him solace. To, eh, to, God is saying, be patient, because this, this has already happened earlier, that God's word is fulfilled. And to Ad, their brother Hood, he said, oh, my people, serve God, you have no God but he, you are only inventing. See, again, nothing about a religion. Just simple, serve God, you have no God but he, you are only inventing, and to stop your evil deeds. This is another thing the messengers keep exhorting. Oh, my people, I ask of you for it no reward. My reward is only upon him who created me. Will you then not use reason? And, oh, my people, ask forgiveness of your lord, then turn to him. He, he will send the sky upon you in abundant rains and increase you in strength to your strength, and turn not away as lawbreakers. They said, oh, Hood, thou hast not brought us clear evidence, and we will not leave our gods at thy word, and we do not believe thee. We say only that some of our gods have afflicted thee with evil. He said, I call God to witness and bear you witness, that I am quit of that to which you ascribe a partnership. Besides him, so scheme against me altogether, then grant me no respite. I have placed my trust in God, my lord, and your lord. There is no creature save he holds it by his forelock. My lord is on a straight path. Then if they turn away, I have conveyed to you that. Then if you turn away, I have conveyed to you that wherewith I was sent to you, and my lord will make succeed you a people other than you, and you will not harm him at all. My lord is custodian over all things. It was a messenger sent to his people, and his people denied him. And uh, they were delivered, he delivered the grim news to them, that God will make another people succeed you, as in there, he will destroy you. And you cannot do anything to him, um, and I have conveyed to you that wherewith I was sent to you. See, this is. This is critically understand, and the messengers always conveyed what was given to them. That's what a messenger does. He's a bear of glad tidings, a warner, and he. Gives the message verbatim. And this is it, this is it, eh, he doesn't invent things. And when our command came, we delivered Hood and those who heeded warning with him by mercy from us, and we saved them from a stern punishment. And those were odd, they rejected the proofs of their lord and opposed his messengers, and followed the command of every obstinate tyrant. And they were followed by a curse in the world and on the day of resurrection. They will be followed by a curse as well. In truth, Ad denied the lord, so away with Ad, the people of Hood. And to Tamu, their brother Saleh, he said, oh, my people, serve God, you have no God but he. He produced you from the earth and settled you therein, so ask forgiveness of him, then turn to him, my lord is near and responsive. They said, oh, Saleh. Thou hast been a, among us one in whom hope was placed before this. Does thou forbid us to serve what our father served? We are about that to which thou invited us in spec- in skeptical doubt. He said, oh, my people, have you considered? If I be upon clear evidence from thy lord, from my lord, and he has given me mercy from him, then who would help me against God if I disobeyed him? Then would you not increase me other than in laws? And, oh, my people, this is the she-camel of God to you approved, so leave her to feed in God's earth and touch her not with evil lest on your punishment sees you. A lot of speculation about what this she camel is. Whatever it was, I mean, the Quran just talks about it being a sign from God, so that's it. Anyway, didn't, didn't, it didn't really do anything, because they're still denied. Then they hamstrung her, and he said, enjoy yourselves in your homes three days. That is a promise not to be belied. And when our command came, we delivered Saleh and those who heeded warning with him by mercy from us. And from the disgrace of that day, thy lord, he is the strong, the exalted in might. And the blast seized those who did wrong, and morning found them lying prone in their homes. Um, this word, uh, literally means on their bellies. And if they had, as if they had never lived therein, in truth, Tamu denied their lord, so away with Tamu. See, to me, this. Wh- this is coming up again and again, so away with this, so away with that, so away with Tamu, so. This, these to me means, these are the words of God, they're being fulfilled. And our messengers came to Abraham with glad tidings. They said, peace, said he, peace, and he tired not to bring a roasted calf. And when he saw their hands reaching not towards it, he was suspicious of them. And conceived a fear from them. They said, fear thou not, we have been sent to the people of Luth. Now, he felt fear of them because. They were not accepting his hospitality, as in they had some maybe. Ill intentions towards him. So they, uh, they believed of, of him, they believed him of that, and they said. That fear thou not, we have been sent, as in we are going to destroy the people of Luth. Um, bearer of glad tidings and mourners, kind of like the theme that's playing out, they, they're bringing good glad news to Abraham, but they're gonna bear. They're gonna, they're gonna bring. Evil tidings to, uh, Luth that the people are going to be destroyed. And his wife was standing, and she laughed, and we gave her glad tidings of Isaac, and after Isaac, Jacob. In Arabic, Isaac is Ishaq, and uh, Jacob is Yaqub. And the reason I'm giving you the Arabic names is just so. It's clear that I don't really subscribe to the, the, the biblical, um. Stories, so that's why I'm giving you the Arabic names. Um, these might be the same men that are mentioned, eh, but, you know, I, I just take the Quran. So the Quran uses the Arabic names. She said, oh, woe is me, shall I bear a child when I am an old woman and this my husband and old man? This is an amazing thing. They said, thus thou marvel at the command of God? The mercy of God and its blessings be upon you, people of the house, he is praiseworthy and glorious. And when the alarm had left Abraham and the glad tidings had reached him, he disputed with us concerning the people of Lot. Ibrahim and Luth. Ibrahim was clement, compassionate, penitent. Oh, Ibrahim, forsake thou this. The command of thy lord has come, and there will come to them a punishment which cannot be repelled. None can change the words of God. And when our messengers came to Luth, he was distressed for them and straitened with unease for them, and he said, this is a trying day. Now, this is not that Luth was distressed for the people. I mean, his people were finished. They were evil. He was distressed for the messengers, because. His people were gonna come and try to take them. Cause that's the kind of people they were. So he was distressed for them, the messengers. Uh, as in he couldn't protect them. Uh, he didn't know at this point that they were, you know, angels from God that were gonna destroy. And his people came to him hastening towards him, and before they, that, before had they been doing evil deeds, he said. Oh, my people, these are my daughters, they are pure for you, so be in prudent fear of God, and disgrace me not concerning my guests. Is there, is then there not among you right-minded men? They said, thou knewest we have no right to thy daughters, and thou knowest what we desire. He said, with that I had power against you or could take shelter in a strong support. Said they, oh, Luth, we are messengers of thy lord. They will not reach thee, and travel thou with thy household during a portion of the night. And let not any of you turn away, turn around, save thy wife. They will befall her what befalls them. Their appointment is the morning. Is then the morning not near? And when our command came, we utterly overthrew it, and rained upon its stones of baked clay piled up in layers. Marked in the side of thy lord, and it is not far from the wrongdoers. And to Madian, their brother Shueb, he said, oh, my people, serve God, you have no God but he, so decrease not the measure and the balance. I see you in affluence, but I fear for you the punishment of an encompassing day. See, decrease not the measure and the balance, don't. Don't scam people. By the way, uh, one thing that Brother Garen's pointed out, I, I. Long time ago, I still remember, he said something, and he's, he's correct, that if you actually read these, these narrations of the previous messengers. You will find that their people were doing some specific evil, you know, like Luth's people, they were doing, um. They were. Sodomites, and then, uh, you know, um. In the case of, uh, Shueb, we see that they were scamming people, they were not, they were defrauding men, uh, of their things. Uh, Fidon ob- obviously was calling himself a god, and he was killing, um, people. Uh, we see all of these evils being wrapped up in, in the tyranny we live in, in this world today. All of these evils are happening, everything, all the evils. That, that's, that's a pretty scary thing to notice. And, oh, my people, fulfill the measure and the balance with equity, and deprive not men of their possessions, and commit not evil in the earth working corruption. The remainder of God is better for you, if you be believers, and I am not a custodian over you. Verse eighty-seven, they said, oh, Shueb, does thy duty command thee? That we leave what our father served, or that we do not, or we do not with our wealth what we will. Thou art the clement, the right-minded, obviously being sarcastic here. Let's come back to this thing, cause this is again, a problem for the traditionalists, because he understands the word Salat to mean prayer. And he, uh, predictably has problem with this verse. Uh, because if you look at translation, you look at Aubrey, they said, Shueb, does thy prayer command thee that we should leave the, what our, that our father served? Or do we, as we will with our goods, thou are the clement, the, the right-minded. How can a career commander do anything? So obviously, that's not what it means. But if we understand that one of the duties that. Shueb was doing was reading the scripture, so in that scripture, what she was given, uh, there was a command to. Um, worship God alone, so this is what. It means that is, is what you're reading the scripture, is it commanding you that we leave what our father served? He said, oh, my people, have you considered if I be upon clear evidence from my lord? See, evidence, this has to do with something that he was given. And he has provided me with a goodly provision from him, as in, I don't need to resort to the evil stuff you're doing. But I desire not to oppose you in that which I forbid you. I desire only right ordering so far as I am able. And my success is only through God, and him have I placed my trust, and to him do I turn. See, this is again, something that is to be emulated, that we, we as believers, we are to exhort. Towards good and forbid evil, but we are not supposed to, um, rise up against. Eh, 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 against the evil doers, you know, see, as he says here. I desire not to oppose you in that which I forbid you. Don't take matters into your own hands. I desire only right ordering as far as I'm able, as in, you know, all you could say, all you could do was, was warn. And, oh, my people, let not my dissension cause you to commit evil, that they befall you the like of what befall all the people of Nu. Or the people of Hood, or the people of Saleh, and the people of Luth are not far from you. So as in, don't let me, you know, eh, don't. A lot of times when you top people, the evil doers specifically, to not do something, then. They, out of spite, they're gonna do like more of it, you know, try to like prove you, prove something to you, you know? You can't do anything about it, so that's what he's saying, don't let my dissension cause you to commit evil. And ask forgiveness of your lord, then turn to him, my lord is merciful and loving. They said, oh, Shueb, we understand not much of what thou sayest, and we consider thee among us as weak. And were it not for thy fa- family, we would have stoned thee, and thou art not to us one respected. Because a seal had been put on their hearts, they don't understand. He said, oh, my people, is my family more respected for power by you than God? And him have you put behind your backs. My lord encompasses what you do. And, oh, my people, work according to your power. I am working. You will come to know to whom comes a punishment that disgraces him. And who is a liar, and watch, I am with you watching. And when our command came, we saved Shueb and those who heeded warning with him by mercy. and when our command came we saved Shweib and those who heated warning with him by mercy from us and the blast sees those who were doing wrong and mourning found them lying prone in their homes as though they had never lived therein so away with Madian even if Samud was taken away and we sent Moses with our proofs and a clear authority to Pharaoh and his eminent ones but they followed the command of Pharaoh and the command of Pharaoh Firon was not right minded he will precede his people on the day of resurrection and lead them to the fire and evil is the place led to and they were followed here by a curse and on the day of resurrection evil is the gift given that is from the reports of the cities we relate to thee among them are standing and reaped and we wrong them not but they wrong their souls and their gods to whom they called besides God availed them nothing when the command of thy Lord came and they increased them not saving ruin see this is a very logical argument because if their gods had any power as they claimed then when God sees them they would have helped them but as we have seen that when God's command came they were utterly destroyed okay so that means that what they were doing was inventing they were they were serving vanity there was nothing real that's the whole point because God alone is 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 the strong the powerful the ally the protector and conversely the believers they believed in God and God saved them and thus is the seizing of thy Lord when he takes the cities when they are doing wrong his seizing is painful and strong and that is approved for those who fear the punishment of the hereafter that is a day to which mankind will be gathered and that is a day witnessed in what has uh been talked about this is approved for those who fear the punishment of the year after and we delay it not safe to a set term if you remember this is the beginning of the Surah of the chapter you will notice in the Quran the chapters most of the time they kind of circle back and what you start out is what it kind of rounds off so in the beginning as you know they were saying what detains it what detains the hour so so God is saying and we delayed not safe to a safe set term on the day it comes no soul will speak saved by his leave and among them will be wretched and glad and as for those wretched wretched then in the fire they will have therein roaring and wailing they abiding eternally therein so long as the heavens and the earth endure save that thy Lord should will thy Lord is doer of what he wills and as for those glad then in the garden they abiding eternally therein so long as the heavens and the earth endure save that thy Lord should will a gift without end so be thou not in doubt concerning what they serve they serve only as their father served before and we will pay them in full for their portion without reduction now is that not the truth is this this is the truth I mean if you really think about this 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 is the truth this this is exactly what they're doing they're serving what their father served before them this is it this is it most people don't reason they don't really look at what they inherited from their fathers and and try to see if they makes it makes sense or not they just blindly follow in their footsteps one ten and we gave Moses the writ then were there differences concerning it and were it not for a word that preceded from thy Lord it would have been decided between them and they are in skeptical doubt concerning it and each thy Lord will replay repay them in full for their deeds he is of what they do aware so take thou a straight path as thou art commanded and he who has repented with thee and transgressed not he sees what you do this is a command that was given to Musa as well take a straight path and he who repented with thee and transgressed not he sees what you do and rely not upon those who do wrong lest the fire touch you and you have besides God no allies then will you not be helped and uphold thou the duty at the two ends of the day and at an approach of the night good deeds take away evil deeds that is a reminder for those who remember and be thou patient for God causes not to be lost the reward of the doers of good now this uphold thou the duty as you know here if you look at the context if you've just been reading this chapter eleven just trying to understand what this chapter is about this chapter is about Warners okay that's why all the narrations were given so appalling the duty mean this is a command to the messenger to uphold the duty as in warn your people at these times and be thou patient for God causes not to be lost the reward of the doers of good and then see again it 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 this is expanding upon this okay so uphold down the duty see now it says what one sixteen oh that among the generation before you there had but been a remnant forbidding corruption in the land save a few whom we saved among them but those who did wrong followed what they had been given therein of opulence and were lawbreakers and never would thy Lord destroy their cities in ju- in injustice when the people were those who do right you see this this is so critical forbidding corruption the land because those who did that they were saved yeah I hope you understand the gravity of what what's being talked about and never would thy Lord destroy the cities in injustice when the people were those who those who do right and had thy Lord or those who reformed mostly own means the reformers and had thy Lord willed he would have made mankind one community but they will cease not to differ this is talking about you know God compelling mankind to believe he would have made them one community but he has allowed differences of opinion that's my understanding but save he upon whom thy Lord has mercy and for that he created them okay so we need to back up a little bit here to understand and had thy Lord willed he would have made mankind one community but they will seize not to differ save he upon whom thy Lord has mercy so upon whom God has mercy he will guide him and for that he created them to have mercy upon them and the word of thy Lord will be fulfilled I will fill Gehenna with the Jinnah and mankind all together and all we relate to thee from the reports of the messengers is that whereby we make firm thy heart and there has come to thee in this the truth and an admonition and a reminder for the believers and say thou to those who do not believe work according to your power we are working and wait we are waiting and to God belongs the unseen of the heavens and the earth and to him will be returned the whole matter so serve thou him and place thou thy trust in him and thy Lord is not unmindful of what you do and that finishes up chapter eleven and we're almost at the one hour mark so I'm not gonna start on chapter twelve uh God willing I'll be in the next session I hope everyone is doing well until next time peace and blessings be upon you